City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting, today is December nineteenth. It is a little bit, it's about eight-ten. Um, we are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under the government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Alright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams, Harrison, Brown.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to item number two, which is the minutes, has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? Alright, hearing none, we're gonna move on to item number three, which is presentations. And we have one presentation tonight, so we are going to do the Oath of Office for our very own Clerk of Council, Mr. Takiya Bailey.
It's gotta be official.
Okay, so, I guess we don't need a bible or anything, do we?
No one?
No, there's no one in here, but you can just right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Say aye, Takiya Bailey.
Takiya Bailey.
Okay. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties as.
And impartially discharge the duties as.
Clerk of Council.
Clerk of Council.
Alright, we were sworn in, so. Takiya, you don't wanna make a speech? Takiya, you don't wanna make a speech or anything?
That was official, official.
We are happy.
Yes, she's doing a great job. Great job.
Alright, uh, Takiya, you don't wanna make a speech or anything, or? Anybody wanna say any words to our new clerk?
We are happy, we're excited to have you. Thank you for all the work that you've.
Just for anybody that don't know me, I am a resident here at Forest Park. I've been here since two thousand and seven. Um, I've been working here for, it's going into my fifth year. Ms. Harlita over there hired me in the tax department. So, just, um, thank you guys for having faith in me, and I'm, I got ya, I'ma take good care of ya. If anybody ever needs anything or whatever, just reach out to me here. Um, and that's it.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Takiya is taking over for our former Clerk of Council, who actually just retired, with Sally Boyd, she has been twenty, what, twenty-five years?
Quite a bit.
Yeah, twenty-five years as our Clerk of Council, so, you know, got big, big shoes to fill, but, you know, we have a lot of faith in, in Takiya. Uh, alright, so that concludes item number three, presentations. Um, so I'm gonna need a motion to amend.
Uh, make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. I'll take it, okay.
Either, whoever wanna do it?
Sure. Make a motion to amend the agenda and to take up this time items I through O under new business. Motion to appoint candidates to boards or commissions.
They moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend? Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes, seven-zero. So, at this time, we're gonna take up items I through O under new business. So, this is going to be a lot of appointments.
Alright.
Alright, so, Councilmember Harrison, you wanna go ahead and start?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will start. Uh, make a motion to appoint Jerry W. Arnold to the Civil Service Commission for a ti, for a term expiring on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
They moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none. Um, can this be a voice vote, or does this have to be roll call? Voice, alright, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, appointment passes. Um, point avoider, should we do the Oath of Office after everyone is appointed, or can we just do it all at the end after we make all of the motions?
You could make all the motions and then swear everybody in.
Okay.
Individually swear.
Okay.
You could do all the motions first, is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, 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 cuz it would, we had to keep doing the oath over and, you know. Alright, so, alright, is there another motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yes, a motion to appoint Mr. Robert Leonard Kelly III to the Quality of Life Commission for the term expiring on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
They moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, moving on to item number K, which is another motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Ms. Marcia L. Watts to the Quality of Life Commission for a term expiring on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
They moved improperly seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? None, motion passes, uh, next, Councilmember?
Yes, a motion to appoint Ms. Reese Wilson to the Quality of Life Commission for the term expiring November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
They moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Motion passes, next one, Councilmember?
A motion to appoint Mr. Dante L. Harris to the Quality of Life Commission for the term expiring eleven-thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
They moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Alright, motion, uh, well, any opposed? Didn't think so, motion passes. Next Councilmember?
A motion to appoint Ms. Michelle Williams to the Quality of Life Commission for the term expiring November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
They moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and take it away, Mr. Harrison.
A motion to appoint Ms. Charmel Robinson to the Quality of Life Commission for the term expiring November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
It has been moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, let it be known. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so all the motions have passed, and now we are going to do the Oath of Office, so if everyone will please, I'm sorry. Well, I'll have to swear them, I mean, at a later date, they'll actually have to come in, and, uh, so.
Ms. Charmel Robinson is here today.
Oh, is she?
She is.
Alright, so everyone who heard their name, if you could all just come up to the front, and then just line up here. We're gonna do the oath.
Will they call out their names individually, when you?
They say their own name. They say their name.
So, if you could repeat after me, you ready to write your first? So, I'll say aye, and then you state your name, and then you should repeat after me, so. So, aye?
Aye.
Well, if you vote one at a time, make sure everybody did. Uh, Robert Kelly.
Jerry Arnold.
Reese Wilson.
Marcia Watts.
Dante Harris.
Charmel Robinson.
Okay, do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that, and that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties as.
And impartially discharge the duties as.
Civil service.
Civil service.
Committee member?
Committee member.
Alright, there you go, you all are sworn in.
And now, all of you must attend every single council meeting.
Yeah, one told it before.
Everyone, stay until the end.
So, everybody said they were civil service.
Right, they were all civil service, that's okay.
I just wanna make a comment, he kinda like, made a mistake.
It is a civil service, but, yeah, the title.
It's a civil service, but your titles for the ones of quality of life, of quality of life, and I think it was.
But that doesn't, that doesn't void it or anything, though.
No.
Just making sure.
I was just, wanted to make that clear.
Okay. So, then, that concludes all of the appointments. So, then, next on the agenda is item number four, which is communications from the public. So, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. So, when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and, and, and address, then state your comments or questions, council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, so comments are limited to five minutes. So, at this point, anybody can address council about any matter that is important to them. If you wanna come up to the podium, just give your name and address, and you're on camera, but, you know, no pressure. Anybody wanna say anything? Don't be shy. Okay? Got any potholes, anything, it's, it's rare we have this many people in council, and we wanna hear directly from you, cuz, you know, you're our boss, so.
You've been talking to your neighbors lately about some things that you're displeased with or excited about.
Alright, here we go.
Lights going up and everything.
Open up the Pandora, alright.
Might as well use your opportunity.
Yeah.
So, I'm back again about the garden, um, for next year, since it's winter now. I do still wanna proceed with that in Forest Park. I do have one going in Springfield Township, one in Lincoln Heights, and one in Woodlawn. All are doing phenomenally well. I want that here, so we have access to fresh food and being able to grow our community. And I'm hoping with the Quality of Life Board, we could all work together so that we could do this and get this passed out and get this going. That's really it.
What was the address of the plot of land that you were looking at again?
Um, there is one in the C section, and there's also one over in the H section by where Walmart was.
Okay. Is that one around you? Is it, okay?
Yeah, I thought they were working on the irrigation.
Jay does? Okay. So, at this time, we'll close communications for the public unless anybody is feeling so inclined to speak. Alright, so we're gonna move on to item number five, which is the reports from standing committees. At this is, at this point, we're kinda getting to the, the nitty-gritty, this is kinda the boring stuff, so if anybody feels that they have to leave, uh, feel free to, we won't be offended, you can just get up and, and go out, but if you wanna see how, you know, how the, uh, the sausage is made, stick around. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna go to reports from standing committees, and we're gonna start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanna just say, um, on behalf of the Beautification Committee, this past Friday, we went out, we judged houses for holiday decorations, and we had a phenomenal time, so, um, thank you to those who submitted, um, their addresses for us to come visit. Secondly, um, as a member of the Quality of Life Commission, I just wanna say welcome, very excited to be working with you. And also too, I just wanna put out there again that fiveonethreerelief.org is taking applications for rent and utility assistance. If you've had a hardship since the onset of COVID, please, uh, and you can use the assistance, please apply at fiveonethreerelief.org and/or call nine-four-six-one-thousand and hit option one. Um, Job and Family Services has made it where there is a live person that will answer the phone. So, for those that, uh, may need a little bit of assistance with rent, utility, mortgage, and/or property assistance, please take advantage of this program. If not, pass the information on to someone who does need it. Thank you. And for some of those programs, seniors are eligible as well. Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing else at this time.
Alright, thank you, I don't have any, uh, work session items for you, but would you like to add any?
Not at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, thank you, moving on to, uh, Councilmember Clark.
Uh, thank you, um, all I have to report from, uh, environmental awareness is that the tree drop-off, um, will be December twenty-sixth and it'll run through, excuse me, January eighth. Um, please do be mindful about your fresh trees, um, because there's a, there can be a fire, uh, a fire risk. Um, and then we are also having, um, continuing with our tree removal program, so we provide a fifty percent subsidiary, um, or subsidy, rather, up to a maximum of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per household, and that is for dead, dying, decaying trees that you may have. So, you can reach out to, um, the Environmental Department here in order to get that started. That's all that I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Clark, I don't have any work session items for you either, would you like to add any?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to welcome all the new appointees. Uh, thank you for coming out this evening and being sworn in. Uh, we look forward to your input and what great things you can bring to our city. Um, I only have one thing, Wade Cross Community TV does have one vacancy on the board. Um, for, so if there's any Forest Park resident who would like to sit on the Wade Cross Community TV board, uh, please submit your name, we'd love to have you. Um, and that's all I have right now.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember, I don't have any work session items, would you like to add?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
Alright, moving on to, uh, First Vice Mayor Holt.
I don't have a report, I would just like to wish all of the citizens of Forest Park happy, safe holiday seasons, and we'll see you next year. So, enjoy your holiday. That's it for me, and I don't have any, any, uh, items for the next meeting.
Alright, thank you, First Vice Mayor, moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanna say congratulations to the new Quality of Life Committee, I'm so excited, um, that you chose to volunteer your time for the city of Forest Park. And so, now it's time to get to work. And so, our next step is our Clerk of Council will contact you to let you know when our next meeting will be. So, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to volunteer. Also, I, I wanna congratulate Officer Wilson, he's our, um, We Thrive Champion, um, for this year's annual, um, We Thrive Champion, um, awards. And so, we wanna thank him for his time and service to our community, um, and to our school district, and so we really appreciate all the hard work. Um, to be a We Thrive Champion, you really have to dedicate your time to your community and be a good citizen, a good employee. And so, we really thank him for really investing in our community. And that completes my report.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Moore, I don't have any work session items for you, would you like to add any?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Alright, thank you, and moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no detailed report, just we've had some success throughout this past year with some of the various events that the city, uh, put on through this past summer, and some of the, uh, the drummers that was with, uh, Breakfast with the Santa, and, uh, and our tree lighting event. So, uh, twenty-twenty-two has been, uh, a part of a challenge, and I'm sure twenty-twenty-three will continue to, uh, to move forward in challenges for, uh, for the council and for the city of Forest Park, but I'm sure as we work together, as we just made witness to each of you who have come out and now have volunteered their time to be a part of working for the better, the good for the city. So, I thank you for, uh, for, uh, taking on the challenge, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, receiving the good things that you bring, uh, to the city of Forest Park. So, uh, just wanted to make those comments, uh, there's no official report. So, uh, yeah, happy holidays to, uh, to each of you, to the city of Forest Park.
Thank you for that, Councilmember, and I don't have any work session items for you either, would you like to add any?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So, that concludes item number five, which is reports from standing committees. And moving on to item number six, which is the Mayor's Report. Uh, I don't have an official report, but I did, uh, get to attend, um, the, um, local church city gate, um, over on, off of Sebring Avenue, and they had a bike giveaway just this last Sunday. They actually gave away seven-hundred bikes to different, you know, uh, church members and residents. Um, it was a sight to behold, to see kids' faces light up, cuz not only did they get bikes, um, it was all age-appropriate bikes for a number of different children, but they got toys as well. So, it was incredible, but the city of Forest Park, uh, on, you know, thanks to our fire department, um, they gave a donation of helmets to all seven-hundred kids. So, um, city gate had the bikes, but they didn't have the helmets, and I told them like, oh, well, do I got a deal for you? So, we actually, uh, you know, I wanted to thank our, our fire chief and, and, um, We Thrive, and actually, um, Jermaine Hill, our We Thrive Coordinator, actually, for having those, uh, helmets in storage, because if, if, if they didn't have that bike giveaway, we would've still be sitting on a, a surplus of, of children's bike helmets. But I just thought it was a very good, uh, very wonderful event. Um, but to echo, uh, Councilmember Sylvester's sentiments, it has been a very monumentous year since, especially since both of you joined, uh, Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Harrison. I know you ain't paying attention right now, no. But no, uh, Forest Park, we've had a lot of, we had a tremendous year, a lot of successful events. We had a great turnout after not having Jazz in the Park for, what, uh, two years? So, next year, it's gonna be even bigger and better, um, you know, I'm hoping, a lot of residents say we should move it to two days, um, that Friday and Saturday, or even Saturday, Sunday, and I'm, you know, that's, I'm with it. But, uh, we also had a successful bike event, uh, we're gonna have another one next year. Um, a lot of, a year first as well, it was the first time that the city of Forest Park has participated as a cosponsor for the Black Family Reunion. Um, this was the first time that the city of Forest Park has ever done that. And then, it's also the first time any other city outside of Cincinnati has also been a cosponsor for the Black Family Reunion, so we thought that was important, and we'll be participating again. We partnered with Wynwood School District during that time, and we had the marching band come down, and we were the largest group at the event, so it was, it was a really, really, um, wonderful event. Uh, we also, for the first time, got a table for the NAACP Freedom Fund Gala, so, um, our former mayor, Mayor Johnson, was being honored, um, with, uh, the, um, the Theodore Berry Award for Public Service. So, he was being awarded, and we got a table, um, to, uh, celebrate him that night, so that was the first time as well. But, you know, a lot of times people say Forest Park is, its best days are behind it, and, you know, it was better when, you know, pe, people were young, but we hear you, and we feel the same way, cuz we're residents too. So, just like I said, um, we wanna thank you for your service, but you tell us exactly what you want us to do, because you are also, um, our boss, you know, so you're serving the community, and we serve you specifically. So, um, we thank you for joining the Quality of Life Committee, we thank you for putting pressure on us, but we hear you, we hear everything that you're saying. If we want more, we have to, um, expect more of ourselves, and we have to do more. So, um, our population has grown, we are now the second-largest city in Hamilton County. That's something that's not advertised, but, um, I see the news reports same as you. So, they report on the not-so-great things, but we're gonna make sure that we are championing, uh, championing ourself, but then also the positive things that our community is doing, and, you know, uh, civil servants like you. Even though you're on Quality of Life, you're a civil servant now. Um, so, I wanna thank you for coming out, I wanna thank you, um, for, uh, pushing us to be better, and we'll have more reports for you like this in the future. But that concludes my report, and I do not have any work session items to add at this time. So, we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, may I please? I just wanna publicly say thank you, um, for your innovation and your energy and the focus and the intentional detail that you've been putting forth since you've taken the seat. Um, I talk to people all the time, and they go on and on about, you guys have a really young mayor, and he's really innovative, and I just wanna say thank you. I appreciate it, this is my first, uh, seat in my first year in, uh, on city council, and you have been, uh, very supportive, and you have been very supportive, and you've been listening to the people. So, I just wanna publicly say thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, if you really wanna be supportive, you can ask Harlita to, to give my taxes. Cuz my tax bill is kinda high, Harlita, but, you know, uh, we'll, we'll. We, we, we love you too, Harlita. Our, our wonderful finance director, and she's.
Now y'all have questions, don't you?
But, um, yeah, no, um, yeah, I love this community as well. Um, but not only that, I do wanna always try to emphasize to people, um, as much as I love Forest Park, if I was anywhere else, I would do the same thing, because a part of me running was to let people know that young people, and I'm not that young, I'm actually thirty-two, but young people, we need to be involved as well. Right? Mayor Johnson.
You smell Similac too?
You see these gray hairs? They're here, they're coming out, but no, um, we have ideas, we are residents, and a lot of people, um, I see young people in this room tonight, like, a lot of people think that, um, millennials don't care. They don't think, they think that we're not involved, and, um, they think that people can't, um, make an investment in their community, and I want everyone to know that that's not true. We care too, but we just have more student loans, so we're working twice as many jobs. You know, I work, and then I come here, so I tell people all the time, when I get off work, I'm going into work, but this is service, so I don't look at this work. Um, but I just want people to know that even though, um, someone may be, you know, young and still have Similac under breath, that they're a resident, and their ideas matter just as much. And I want to serve in, as an example, in whatever capacity that I can, um, to show people that, that it's our time to be involved. But, uh, like I said, that concludes my report. Uh, we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is the City Manager's Report. Uh, so, Don, take it away.
I'll keep it pretty, uh, pretty short and sweet. The, um, um, no real long report today, I did wanna remind everyone that it's the Christmas season, obviously, and make sure that you, you know, donate where you can and help the people locally that you, that you can. Um, it's a, it's a time of year that, uh, we think about it, of course, the needs year-round, but, uh, if this is the time of year that you're thinking about it, then act on it. Donate locally and, and help the folks here, um, that, that are part of our community, but also part of our larger community in here in the city of Cincinnati, and Hamilton County, and so forth. But, anyway, because it is the holiday season, remember that there is a lot of theft going on. Uh, be aware when you're out, um, if you're at a, if you're out at a shopping center or somewhere shopping, make sure you are aware of your situation. Um, make sure you don't store your Christmas presents and your, and your packages and so forth in the car, particularly overnight. Get your, you know, get everything out of there and get them in, don't be, don't make yourself a victim, um, because they're gonna take the easiest and, um, and the biggest prize they can. If you've got something in the car, it might get stolen. If there's nothing there, they probably just move on to the next one. But, um, so lock your cars at night, get your stuff out of there, make sure you don't leave packages in plain view. And, um, if you own a Hyundai, get yourself a club. Um, if you don't know what a club is, go look it up on YouTube, but, uh, there was a rash of Hyundays, um, gone through over the weekend. And, uh, it's just, you know, gangs of people who go from place to place to place. They steal the cars, apparently on YouTube, there's, they figured out how to do it within like fifteen seconds. I mean, it's just incredible.
Same for keys above, like, twenty-seventeen, I think?
Yep, key is, if you've got a key, um, yes, it does not affect the push-button ones, but if you've got a key to that, start your car, um, you know, keep an eye on it, and get yourself a club, disable that, you put that on the, on the steering wheel.
Park it in your driveway.
Park it in your driveway, park another car behind it. Or in your garage. That's what I did, I've got one. I parked my, I parked it first and put one right behind it, so, uh, but anyway, um, that's, you know, that's going on in the general community, uh, not just necessarily here in Forest Park, but I just wanna make sure everybody's aware, and, uh, they don't become victims this time of year. It's, uh, it's, it's a great holiday season, everybody needs to be happy and celebrate the season, celebrate. I think today's the first day of Monica, and so whenever your, uh, persuasion is, or your, your, your faith, it's a great season, and, uh, celebrate as, as you, as you please. That's it.
Alright, thank you for that, Don, it is holiday season, there are a lot of holidays going on. So, we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is other reports, and we're gonna start with our Law Director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I gave an opinion to the Fire Chief regarding, uh, intellectual property being excluded from public records requests. Uh, also had an opportunity to look at the issue regarding the First Amendment auditors, and the interesting thing is, I'm hooked on blue bloods, I always, I always tape it and watch it later, and last week's show was about First Amendment auditors.
Really?
They were harassing the mayor.
Uh, well, art imitates life, right?
And then also, I had an opportunity to, uh, uh, consider whether we could pursue teenagers, minors that get involved with fake school calls, and as you probably all know, our state legislative body just passed, um, a new law that requires, doesn't require, but now positions it as a felony crime if a fake alarm is put in by anybody, including minor children. That would be the end of my report, unless you have any other questions.
Does anybody have any questions for our Law Director? Alright, thank you.
I have a question, it's not specifically regarding the things that he mentioned, but with the car break-ins that we've been having within our city, there was some discussion, I believe, last week or whatnot, regarding possible cameras that could read license plates, so I just wanna probably add, so we can put that on the table, to kinda have that discussion as a deterrent to.
So I just wanna probably add, so we can put that on the table, to kinda have that discussion as a deterrent to, um, crime being within our city, but trying to be proactive. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for our Law Director? All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, the next other report from our Clerk of Counsel, newly sworn in, Ms. Tequila, Ms. Tequila Bailey.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers forty-one dash twenty twenty-two, forty-two dash twenty twenty-two, and forty-three dash twenty twenty-two, and Resolutions Number fifty dash twenty twenty-two, and fifty-one dash twenty twenty-two were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. All right, we're gonna move to item number nine, which is new business. So I need a motion to suspend.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring, requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only. Ordinance number forty-one dash twenty twenty-two through forty-three dash twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Only that these ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Okay, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Carr?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown? Yes. All right, motion to suspend passes. Um, so will the clerk please read ordinance number forty-one dash twenty twenty-two by title only?
Ordinance number forty-one dash twenty twenty-two, making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Forest Park, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey. All right, um, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I'd like to motion, uh, that we adopt, uh, excuse me, ordinance number, uh, forty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any, uh, discussion?
Uh, involved with this, uh, this ordinance, it's, uh, gives the authority with our City Manager and our Finance Director to, uh, carry out the, uh, financial duties, uh, of appropriations and reallocate in finance to continue the support of, uh, city, uh, business and the functions of the city. So, uh, with that, uh, motion that we adopt, ordinance number forty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Harrison? Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. All right, uh, ordinance number forty-one dash twenty twenty-two passes. Uh, moving on, um, is to the next ordinance, number forty-two. Is there a, uh, will the clerk please read this by title only?
Amending, I'm sorry, ordinance number forty-two dash twenty twenty-two, amending appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Forest Park, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
All right, is there a, uh, motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I'd like also, uh, motion to move on ordinance number forty-two dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
This deal with the, uh, current expenses of the, of the City of Forest Park, uh, also in conjunction with appropriations of, uh, reallocating various, uh, funds with the various departments that's associated with the City of Forest Park, to help balance out the, uh, the activities and to, uh, and to make, uh, good, what's, what need to be done for the city. So, uh, these, these things have been presented, uh, to the council, and, uh, and based on the information that's been provided, I move that we adopt ordinance number forty-two dash twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please, um, read the, call the role on the motion to adopt?
Cole?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harrison? Yes.
All right, ordinance number forty-two dash twenty twenty-two passes. Uh, moving on to ordinance number forty-three, will the clerk please read that by title only?
Ordinance number forty-three dash twenty twenty-two, declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to be public purpose under Section five-seven-zero-nine dot four-zero of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real estate, I'm sorry, from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Uh, yes, uh, this also will be a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance number forty-three dash twenty twenty-two.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none? I'm sorry. Oh, it's no, okay. Hearing none, uh, will the clerk please, uh, read the role on the motion to adopt?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number forty-three dash twenty twenty-two passes. Seven zero. Moving on to ordinance number forty-four dash twenty twenty-two. Will the clerk please read that ordinance in full?
Ordinance number forty-four dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance establishing the Quality of Life Commission for the City of Forest Park, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the City of Forest Park has a diverse population, which enhances the sense of community and the cultural experiences of all residents, and whereas the residents of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, recognize the need for a forum to recommend ways to better recognize the contributions of all Forest Park residents to the great quality of life, and to identify any obstacles that may prevent full citizen participation in all of our civi- cities, civic, and other activities. And whereas the City of Forest Park desires to ensure all civic, governmental, and community activities and services are done without bias or discrimination, and whereas the city has a continued interest to maintain and further enhance the quality of life in the city, and now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, Section One, that it is hereby created a Quality of Life Commission for the City of Forest Park, Ohio, composed not more than seven or less than five members. Section Two, that such commissioners shall be appointed by council from the electors of the city to serve terms of three years. Section Three, that such commissioners shall be appointed by council from the electors of the city to serve terms of three years, that the duties and bylaw shall be created by the members of the commission and submitted for approval to the City Council with a focus on advising the council on issues and programs related to the quality of life for all its residents. Section Four, that the council hereby declares this ordinance to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. For this reason, that the quality of life in the City of Forest Park is a critical need for focus and discussion. The ordinance shall be in full force and take effect from its passage.
All right, thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey.
I have, um, I have a, uh, a correction. If you go down the fourth whereas, when you read that, you said the city has a continued interest. It should read council.
I'm sorry, the council has a continued interest, interest.
You gonna nitpick her on her first day? Come on.
It's okay, that's how I'm learning. It's okay.
It's fine. I, we, I know what you meant. I, I got your back.
All over?
No, okay.
No, you'll have to read it again. You're perfectly fine. Denise.
Noted.
Okay. All right, um, so thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey. All right, um, so I move to adopt ordinance number forty-four dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, as you just heard read out, this is the ordinance that actually creates this committee and establishes it, that you are all just, you know, sworn in and appointed to. So once we vote on it, it's really gonna be official, and when would the first meeting be? 'Cause it'll be in the new year, correct?
Yes, we'll let council, um, a Clerk of Council will let the, um, candidates know, let the committee know when to meet.
All right, so every, everybody will be notified by, uh, whatever contact points you put down, your phone number, email, but then it'll also be posted in the city and, and-
Yeah, it's public notice.
Public notice, okay. All right, uh, will the clerk please call the role on, uh, the motion to adopt?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carr? Yes.
Harrison?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number forty-four dash twenty twenty-two passes. Uh, moving on, uh, will the clerk please read ordinance number forty-five dash twenty twenty-two in full?
Ordinance number forty-five dash twenty twenty-two, amending appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Forest Park, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the twenty twenty-two annual appropriations were established in ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, and were adopted by City Council on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and whereas the anticipated revenue and expenditures are coming in as anticipated for the general fund and other funds of the city, and whereas appropriations must be within available resource, resources per the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas an amended certificate of resources is being requested from the Hamilton County Budget Commission. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park. Section One, that the two, twenty twenty-two annual appropriation ordinance, twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, five dash twenty twenty-two, twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, twenty-three dash twenty twenty-two, thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two, and forty-two dash twenty twenty-two, has hereby amended, has hereby amended to the amounts listed on Exhibit One. Section Two, the Finance Director is hereby authorized to make payments utilizing the city, the city's treasury for expenditures from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certification. The Finance Director is hereby authorized to administer and monitor purchase requisis- requisitions approved by the Department Directors and authorized by law, by ordinance, or by resolution. The Finance Director is hereby authorized to pay salaries in accordance with the city's salary resolution and within the personal service appropriation listed in Exhibit One. Section Three, the Finance Director is hereby authorized to transfer or advance amounts included in the appropriation to correct funds as listed on Exhibit Two. Section Four, this appropriation ordinance will be, will be in full force and take effect on its passage pursuant to the provisions of Section twelve dot oh-five, zero-five of the Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
All right, thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey. Um, is there, uh, do we have a, uh, motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion that we adopt ordinance number forty-five dash twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, do we have any discussion, Councilmember?
Uh, we just heard the board reading on this ordinance, and, uh, it supports the, uh, additional work that's involved with, uh, with the amendment of the appropriations for the city business. So upon that, uh, I move that we adopt, uh, forty-five dash twenty twenty-two.
Second, Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I noticed.
I didn't even see that.
Asking, which page is that? Forty-three?
Forty-three.
Yeah, they were asking about, uh, personal service fee.
A letter, she's here.
Sorry?
Oh, that's just, you know, that's salaries and benefits and, and keys in there too.
Which, is there a general fund code that we're-
On number six, page forty-three, um, the first vice mayor had pointed out that, uh, the personal services fee. This is the same that was in work session, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is, uh, this is an additional.
Oh, this is an, this is additional.
The line item they're looking at was not changed, are they? It's the fire department's the only one that changed, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I take my second back?
Well, I don't know, point of order. Uh, what is the procedure once we rescind a second? We do, we recall for a second?
We can discuss it, I guess. Can you do that?
I'm not hearing, what is it you're trying to do?
Um, so it was, it was moved properly, and then it was seconded, and then, uh, the councilwoman is actually rescinding her second on the motion.
Only for discussion purposes, because we found a discrepancy that we wanted to have. Is that okay? Can I do that? All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I believe on this ordinance, though, um, the only amended, so Harlita- Yeah, if you can come to the, um, podium and address the questions that council has. 'Cause I think the only changes was to the fire department's salary, correct? Right.
Supplement six should only change personal services in the fire department.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, the receptionist.
Oh, rece- um-
Harlita.
Not, not that she's clerkship.
No, right, 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 so- So not her salary now, but like, when she was receptionist.
Previous, uh, we understand, we understand, salary of the clerk, and then, hustle of the city man, okay.
Um, yes, so, what, what this is, is it's the city manager's salary and the receptionist was, and the city manager's office for all of twenty twenty-two. Well, that's what that is, but it has been that way for all of twenty twenty-two.
So it was, it was also, um, for the, the secretary's salary, or, um, retirement.
Is she in there? Is that after the first year?
The administrative secretary?
That was in twenty twenty-one, when she retired. But I'm not sh- now, Don, I'm not, I'm not sure, didn't we have a, didn't we have two receptionists? Or did we have one the whole year?
We had one the whole year.
Didn't we start, and then in February, something happened?
Yeah.
So we had a payout of a receptionist for, from a retirement, and then we had a replacement of the receptionist. And then Don's salary is in there as well.
So that, and that was reflected in the original?
That's in the original.
And this is the amendment, uh-
Right, and that did not change. So what's in the middle is the changes.
Right, the hundred seventy-six thousand for fire.
Correct.
So, is there-
Correct. So supplement number six adds the funds for the fire department for their third payroll. And their juneteenth payout.
Right, right. Gotta pay those firefighters.
Yes, they reminded me I didn't give them their time.
We all love firefighters.
Yes.
Right.
It's what the barko launchers are for.
All right, does anybody else have any questions about, um, this appropriations amendment? Okay, um, so it had already been moved once. Is there a second?
Am I good for my second now?
I'm sorry, you can leave, Harlita.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for the explanation.
Anytime I can clarify.
Okay, so it's been moved. Is there a second? Second? Okay. All right, is there any, uh, further discussion? All right, hearing now, will the clerk please call the role on, uh, the motion to adopt?
Yes.
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 Yeah. No.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number forty-five dash twenty twenty-two passes six to one. All right, um, I need a motion to suspend? That actually concludes those ordinances, correct? Yep. So I need a motion to suspend.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions, number, numbers fifty dash twenty twenty-two and fifty-one dash twenty twenty-two by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any, uh, further discussion?
Uh, these resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Uh, Mrs. Bailey, will you please, uh, call the role on the motion to suspend? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
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 All right, motion to suspend passes seven-zero. All right, moving on to, uh, resolution number fifty dash twenty-two, uh, will the clerk please read that by title only?
Resolution twenty-two, amended the resolution setting rate of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
All right, uh, I make a motion that we table, uh, resolution number fifty dash twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved. Um, actually, when do we reconvene from recess? Council member?
Tonight.
Tonight. It'll be the work session, so then we'll have to, we'll have to table it until the, um, what would that be, the sixteenth? All right, I make a motion, um, let me just resend my motion, the first one. But I make a motion to table resolution number fifty dash twenty-two until January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
I, I, I know, that's why I wanted to know if people wanted to table or do, we want to do an executive session? We still have to have your inter-year review. And, um, there's a discrepancy on the economic development manager's salary isn't included in the, in the resolution. We amended the.
Exhibit.
We amended the salary from a director to a manager, but then it doesn't even say manager in here. Yeah, resolution fifty, actually, if everybody can pull it up. Cause it, it was included after, I think, community, uh, right after the director of building and inspections, but now, cause I know we're moving from a director to a manager position. Fifty, resolution fifty. It's gonna be at the back. Yeah, it's not in there, cause I know it was on the work session. Yeah. True, but at the same time, though, uh, we also wanted to discuss, um, uh, percentage increase.
Oh, okay.
For different, yeah, so.
Okay.
I can actually resend my motion. Um, point of order, are we allowed to convene an executive session, but will, will we have to, uh, amend the agenda prior?
You have to amend the agenda.
Okay.
Cause there has to be public notice.
It does have to be public notice, right? Okay, so from that point. I think, I think we would still need to. No, cause that would be a special meeting. We have to, you know, we wanna keep on schedule for council.
Harley, can you explain these? Just so everybody knows what they are, what they represent?
Yeah, Harley Dave. Cause there're just a couple of questions.
Okay, so if there is a new position, um, that is in this resolution or is not in this resolution, then once that person is hired, we would have to bring legislation back to city council to allow me to pay that person.
To amend, just like we did with the.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so if that position is missing, then I would have to bring something back before you to pay them. So that's a vacant position, there's nobody in it right now, although we're advertising for it.
But we can't just do it as an amendment and we don't need this.
Yes. No, you can, you can pass what's in front of you because if you don't pass what's in front of you, everybody that's working doesn't get paid, including city council. For January, so it, it's like all wheels stop, so, um, I will do a complete audit on this because this is one of the training things that Hui Ming did. Um, and she is new, so I will go back and fully audit all the new positions to make sure they're added. Because I'm not authorized to pay these people if their positions are not properly represented in your resolution.
Okay, so is.
The titles have to match and I had expressed that to her, so.
All right, and then just for clarity, these represent also ranges and not specific increases?
Correct.
Okay.
They are the minimum and maximum that we are allowed to pay. So because you don't know what skill set of the person that you're going to hire, so it allows us the flexibility to get the most skilled person within a pay grid to come into the city.
So with the range, um, the percentage increase to reflect or the raise to reflect inflation? We still are sticking at two percent, two or three percent?
It's two and a half for everyone.
Is that for every, uh, department head or?
It's every position except police. The police union is under negotiation, so they're in at zero right now, um, because they're being negotiated.
So we can still pass it tonight?
Yes.
Everybody gets paid, that's what we want.
Yes.
We wanna make sure that, uh, even though it's a range, there aren't any percent increases over two to three. That's generally.
What's, what's in the budget is a two and a half percent increase. That's in all the bargaining unit agreements for both, um, fire and public works. We typically do the non-union personnel as the same, Dawn actually decides whether we're going to go with a lesser percentage or whether we can pay them the same as we do unionized staff. We are able to pay unionized rate, so everyone is getting a two and a half.
So in, for this in particular, though, um, this could just be reflected as a clerical error?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will have to bring back an amendment if that position is not in here.
Right, cause we do need that.
Yes, so I'll have to make sure that person is not hired before y'all bring you back an amendment.
We're not, we're not even interviewing until, uh, next week and there won't be an offer made till after the first year.
Right, so there's enough time in January to correct that position and any other position that, cause I tried to make sure that the people we have coming in the first week of January. We have a new receptionist and a new office associate one coming in to help the building department. Um, they've already accepted their offers, I wanna be able to pay those people and I know they are in that ordinance. Um, everyone else, I'll have to make sure that as they come in, they're on that ordinance.
All right, okay, thank you, Harley, so is that clear up the, any confusion, everybody? It's part, so we are expecting, um, to make an amendment later in the year and then every, every range should be an increase of two and a half percent. And it's all, it was a clerical error, but also, uh, as it's reflecting the city manager's salary, it was, everyone else was at one to two percent, but city managers had actually bumped the range with six percent. So the range itself has to match at two and a half?
The directors have a do not exceed, I don't think they have a range.
Okay.
I, I think the directors are the ones that have a do not exceed as well as the part-time people.
Is that also included in the city manager's, uh, contract? Because it goes from one ninety, twenty-nine to two oh one, and that's around six point one percent.
Where are you getting the two oh one? Is that in his contract?
That says, that's the not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
That's his range.
Hold on, let me get the right.
From exhibit one to exhibit two.
Then that's, that's still, that range would still be six percent, everybody else's range is capped at two and a half. Cause these are ranges, but the.
Well, his is not a range, he cannot go above that number.
Right, so.
It can be less, he cannot go above it.
Okay, and that's, that's all we're making sure.
Yes, yes. That's the way all the directors are. Um, there's a cap on every single director's position, but there's also a cap on part-time people. There's a do not exceed for part-time as well.
We're just trying to get clarity on the difference of, of the exhibit, uh, to, uh, initial exhibit two and, and the presented, uh, exhibit two.
So the two and a half percent increase is represented by where the salaries were for twenty-twenty-two and the range should go up two and a half percent for everybody.
Okay. Also, I have a question, um, looking at the community development manager position.
Yes.
Will that change as it won't, will that still not be a not to exceed or do we end up doing a minimum maximum with them? Because our other positions are.
The, when it goes into the administrative category.
Okay.
There will be a minimum and maximum.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Cause it's not a director's position anymore, so we need to remove, well, we don't have to necessarily remove the economic development director. If you choose after the manager has been here for a while to move him into that position, you have that flexibility and I would have that authority to pay it. But there are several positions in this ordinance that are vacant, but it still gives you the flexibility to hire those people during the year if council so chooses. But this is a twofold thing, so this gives me the authorization to put them in the payroll and then I have to budget their actual salary.
Budget changes whether or not they're gonna be hired, huh?
Correct.
Appropriations ordinance.
So there is no director, cause I didn't put any money in for a director, so you would be blowing my budget all the way apart if you decide to not do the manager and go to a director.
It just sets the salary ranges. Plus high and low, it does not, um, set a particular pay rate.
Correct.
For any particular person, and it also doesn't authorize any particular, uh, any particular position. Because those have to be authorized and funded through the budget.
And it doesn't prohibit us from adding at a later date an amendment to create, and create the economic development manager, that's what I thought.
Yeah, if, if, if someone's here, that, that's why there's a lot of open positions.
And if you, if you notice also, it doesn't limit how many of each one of these you can have. It just authorizes me to pay a slot. So I can have as many people in a slot as you need to make the city quality of life, but.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Okay. So get back to the quality of.
All right, so I'll resend my motion now, is there a motion, council member Sylvester, as a, as read?
All right, with the clarity of, uh, what has been presented by the finance director, a motion that we, uh, adopt resolution number fifty dash twenty-two.
All right, uh, has, made the motion correct? Has it been seconded? Is there a second? Second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Does anybody have any other questions about, uh, the ranges? The amendment that we can make to include the economic development manager at a later date? Does everybody understand that this needs to pass in order for?
People to get paid.
People to get, get their check?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so thank you, Harley, there, here no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion, uh, to adopt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, so resolution number fifty dash twenty-two passes seven-zero. Uh, moving on, uh, will the clerk please read resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-two by title only?
Resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-two, a resolution amended the designation of depository by city council and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with those depository agencies.
Okay.
All right, is there a, a motion, council member Sylvester?
A motion that we adopt resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion?
That this, uh, resolution, uh, uh, gives clarity in its, um, declaration of the deposits of this, by the city council and, uh, and gives, uh, authority to the city manager to enter into the agreements of the depository agencies. And with that, I move that we adopt resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-two.
All right, thank you for that, council member. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Harrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right, resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-two passes seven-zero. Uh, moving on to item number H, uh, I need a motion to appoint the clerk of council as, uh, the public records designee. Well, I mean, I need one.
I have a motion to appoint the clerk of council as H nine, public records designee.
Been moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven-zero. All right, and moving on to the last item, so I need a motion to receive the general fund summary report.
Yes, a motion to receive the general fund summary report as, uh, contained in the department's report.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and that concludes all the items on our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? All right, hearing none, I promise we are not usually this, uh, exciting. So, uh, but we thank you for bearing with us, I seen a couple of people yawnin' out there, but all that said, uh, this council meeting is adjourned.